And what I think it is.
So you can Bluetooth it in, right?
Yeah, that's right. Actually, we're still a bunch.
Yeah, we're working on system. Here for hearing devices. Okay. Okay, alright. Okay, good evening. Thank you for all coming out. Like to call the school board meeting to order at 6:33 on February 5th. At this present time, all school board members are present with the exception of school board member Tardif, who is excused due to a health issue. Moving on from that, we encourage everybody to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yep, I'm here.
School Board Member Walters.
I move we delete Agenda Item 18, Enter Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussion of Duties of Employee Pursuant to 1 MRSA Subsection 405-6A with no action.
It's been a motion by School Board Member Walters. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by School Board Member Leary. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. School Board Member Leary?
Yes.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shaiman?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazdin?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. Or 5-0, rather, excuse me. Is there any other adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I have a motion to make.
School Board Member Shaiman?
I move we add an Agenda Item 8, Enter Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussion of Labor Contract Negotiations Pursuant to MRSA Subsection 405-6D with no action.
There's been a motion made by School Board Member Shaiman. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by School Board Member Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. School Board Member Leary?
Yes.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shaiman?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazdin?
Yes.
And School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. That takes care of Agenda Item 3, Adjustments to the Agenda. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Presentation of Plaque to Garrett Abramson, who will defer to Superintendent Dominic DePatsy.
So I know Garrett, we tried to get Garrett here tonight, but he is traveling due to his job. But we like to give plaques to our school board members who have helped the Saco school system move in a great direction. Garrett has been on the board for, was on the board for almost four years. He did a lot of amazing things. He helped us redefine our committees. He helped with Late Start. He also helped with abbreviated Wednesdays, budgets, new RADS, which are new positions, like our STEM teacher. A lot of those things. But above all, he really was passionate about the preschool, and he drove to get that. And we do have a preschool now, and thanks to Garrett. So we want to present this plaque to Garrett, and I hope he's out there in Facebook land. I know he sometimes watches still. So Garrett, thank you for all the work you've done with deep appreciation for your service on the Saco School Board. A hundred years from now, it will not matter what house you lived in, what kind of car you drove, or what was in your bank account, but the world might be a better place because you were important to the lives of children in Saco school system. So thank you, Garrett, very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, which is what everybody is excited to hear about, is that is a presentation from the C.K. Burns School LEGO Robotics Team.
So this is the Saco Honor Daughter Incorporated LEGO Robotics Team, who are part of first. So I am Michael Booth, Holly Tryet, and then I'm Holly.
I'm William.
So we are going to get started with the presentations. So the people who are going to help present, you can stand over here, and the others can ask.
This is where we started. This is in states where we, we did our finals from after regionals, and we won an award which will be in a few slides later. This is also in states where we won our, during practicing, our, our codes, and a picture of us getting ready to go into our presentation. This one is all in regionals, where we started it in before, where we got our paper, where we got to go to states. This is a picture of our, our award in states. So we won the Strategy and Innovation Award for all playground for all wheelchair accessible, and we got, behind was, that was a picture with a trophy, and we wanted, we came up with the idea because we wanted to include everyone on the playground, and it seemed unfair to wheelchair-accessible people that couldn't have fun. We won the Best Project Award in Qualifiers, too. And we won second place, and in the states and the qualifiers, they thought we did a good job with our project on the wheelchair-accessible playground project. The teamwork challenge was when we had, we, in the, in the states, we had to build a certain structure, and we had to use teamwork. When we first started, only one or two people were talking about how to build it. But after more practices, in the states, every single person talks. And we included everyone, and we all agreed on stuff, and we just practiced.
For the robot design, we, for to figure out the robot we were making, we had to judge on all the. Wrote the practices, and then we needed, we voted on which ones we liked, a part of all of it, and then we made one robot for, one robot, one robot that had a bunch of others like it, and then I made it reinforced because it kept falling down, falling down, yeah.
So I hear the best thing to do for you to hear the video is for me to do this, because the video isn't working. So, trying. So, so I'm gonna start a video here of what it was like at qualifiers, and talk a little bit as I. So right now, they built a challenge together as a team, and they put that out on the board. And now they're attempting to get on the bridge. That time they fail, and they're talking right now on the side about whether or not they should do it again, and they decided to take a penalty. So you see she just took a penalty, and they decided to try it again. So this shows the kind of perseverance that they've been building. And then, here it comes. And then there's another video. This one is from when we were at states. The one you saw before was from regionals. You can hear the kids really cheering each other on during this video. And so the core values in First LEGO Robotics include discovery, innovation, inclusion, impact, teamwork, and fun. So you can see that they had fun, that they worked on their skills being a team and talking together. They also made sure that everybody was included, everybody's ideas were included. Like Will explained how everybody's ideas were included in the final robot design that they used. They discovered a lot, as you'll hear throughout some of the other presentations. And impact, I think at the end, we'll hear from some people about how this has impacted their lives. As you can see, being a part of the First LEGO League Robotics Team is about coding and solving challenges with robots and technology, but it's much bigger than that. As Mrs. Tradier alluded to, we talk about core values to make our students better citizens. So through each practice, they work on those core values to grow as team members and good people and good members of our society. And on top of that, if that wasn't enough things to do in a season, we also have a challenge every year that's based in a project. Last year, the theme was Into Orbit, and so the students on the team last year had to solve a problem pertaining to real-life astronauts and problems that had to do with space. This year, our theme was called City Shaper. Students learned about engineers and planners and all the pieces that go into making a community and a city what it is. And our students were inspired by different problems around town that they thought that they might be able to solve, and they chose one. And I'm gonna let you, let them tell you all about the problem that they chose to solve and what they did to research it and figure it out.
Okay, I can do this.
If I can stand right over here.
Alright. When do I start? Oh, okay. Alright, so the process of our season. We started the season with tryouts to see how well we worked together and our problem-solving skills. After tryouts, we looked at problems in our community, like playground accessibility, traffic, and the piping plovers. After figuring out possible problems in our community, we decided on playground accessibility, because that is a big problem, and it's something in our everyday lives. After deciding on a problem, we researched by finding playground pieces and improving them. After that, we did more research by talking to professionals like Dr. Kane, our principal, Ryan Summers, the president of Parks and Rec, and Mr. Honorado, our vice principal, and we almost met with a playground manufacturer, but he couldn't come. After, after talking with them, we used their feedback to improve our ideas. Then we researched some more to look up how much our individual pieces would cost, and how much our playground would cost altogether. After that, we researched even more, and we researched other handicapped equipment to see what else about it. And in between research, some of us were coding our robots, building our prototypes, and engineering our robots. What's next?
This part, just talk about your project part, like what piece of robot equipment.
Okay. One way that we chose to, you. The play, oh, mine, like the one I made?
Like we did for competition, explaining what we presented.
Oh, okay. So to better understand what we would be doing if we were to actually install a piece of our playground equipment, we built mini prototypes out of Legos and other materials, and we presented those like we're doing now, but we don't have them. And mine? Oh, okay. So those are, so then, we have all of our mini prototypes. You know, you might not be able to see them very well, but they're there. And we have multiple different ones. Do you want me to talk about mine? Okay. My personal prototype that I created was called the Merry Go Round for All, and it's a spinning piece of equipment that spins around, and it spins around in a fun, thrilling way, making you, and it's accessible for people with wheelchairs, because it has a ramp that's equipped with also seat belts and straps so that they won't fly off. And then it's also accessible for people without wheelchairs, so that everybody can have fun together and not feel left out.
My piece was about a swing accessible for people with wheelchairs. It is motorized, and you can put a ramp up to it, and then you can have a friend on it, unlike other accessible wheelchair swings.
My piece was a seesaw that had a ramp to, so that they could drive up into it, and they had clips on the base for it, the wheels to clip in so that they wouldn't roll off, and it had a bumper. Since they can't really rock back and forth, it has a bumper to help it kind of keep moving up and down.
My piece of playground equipment was called the Spinster. There was ramps for the, the person in a wheelchair to go up. There will be clips in to clip them in, a lock for the door to close, and then they would spin. It also includes people on wheelchairs, like, not, not wheelchairs, crutches if they break their leg, so they could go up the ramp. There would be a bench there, and they would place their crutches down, and they would spin. And the wheelchair, there, if they had a friend that's not in a wheelchair, they could play with them on the wheelchair.
Oh, should I just say it over here? Okay. So my piece is called the Impossible Obstacle. It's an obstacle course for everybody. So what it does is, if you're in a wheelchair, you can go up this, and it, you have to let, it turns you around and like bounces, so it's fun. And at the end, there's a slide for people in wheelchairs. If you're not in a wheelchair, there's an obstacle course below it. You can't really see that, but underneath it, and so if you're not in a wheelchair, you can also do it. And, yeah, here you go.
Mine is a zip line, and it's meant for wheelchairs, and so you could, what you do is you go up the ramp, and you would, there would be someone, or you could self strap, clip it onto the wheelchair, and it's a strong type of strap that straps onto the wheelchair. Then you would go down, and you unstrapped it, and it's, it's meant to be fun and to include wheelchairs.
Mine is called the Dismaker. It has a ramp in the front, so when you go onto it, it, so wheelchairs can go onto it. And then there's also a gate so no, no other people just stand on the ramp.
Alright, so the next part of our presentation, we have a couple of students who have been practicing to show a challenge on the board to you tonight. A couple of complications since our competition. We have unbuilt and rebuilt robots, because currently the fourth graders are using it in STEM. And so they had to reprogram for tonight during one practice, and we've updated the software. So they learned new software.
So they learned new software on a new robot and were able to work on some coding for you for tonight.
For this one, we're going to push these blocks into the, try to push them into the tan circle.
Remember, doing that, if it makes it in, we get more points than it was. But if it's partly in, we get a little less points, but still points. Okay. And the white one right, um, here, that we did as a program for the competition, we put it in the black circle over there. This was, um, challenge number 11. I don't really think it has a name, but... So we made like a little playground out of Legos, only certain bits of Legos. And we try to place it into one of those circles. If it doesn't make it in, that's fine, but, yeah.
We're gonna do the sensors.
You're gonna try the sensor one?
Yeah. For this one, we're, we're going to use a color sensor. Try two at least. Um, it's going to try, the sensor is going to try to follow the white line, hopefully all the way.
It was close. And it pushed that.
Thank you, guys. Uh, also, since the season has ended, we've done a little bit of reflecting on what Lego Robotics means to us, um, why we should have Lego Robotics, and, um, Ava and Fay have written a few things they want to share with you.
So I wrote down, what does Lego Robotics mean to us? I think it means making, having fun, making mistakes, and learning from them, and being creative and having fun.
One question that, uh, one question that, um, I had for myself was, what does Lego Robotics mean to me and how it helped me? And it didn't just help me in the way that I learned how to co, code and, um, do other Lego Robotics things, but it also taught me about core values. Um, say I was looking at a math problem that was very difficult, and I would normally just skip it and not do it at all, but Lego Robotics taught me that instead of just skipping a math problem, something like that, I would just have to work harder to do it, because I knew that determination would, um, make me feel accomplished in the end.
So I think that's pretty much our presentation, unless anybody had any questions. Oh, I think, I think Ollie shared earlier.
Thank you very much, School Board Member Mozden. You have a question?
I don't, I don't have a question. I have an observation. I've got six grandchildren. They're all about your age. And the, and I've, so I've been through all the Lego programs in Virginia, in Maryland, in Vermont, in New Hampshire. And the one thing that I like is it includes the girls. If you're at the age that the girls start dropping out of technology, don't do it. Tell those guys over there, "Look out, we're coming right up your back." That's one of the things I like about this program, and it's something that should not be overlooked. The things that you're all doing together, the girls finally have a crack at it. Thank you. Thank you.
Did anyone else have a question? Okay, then we will clean up and thank you for giving us your time tonight.
The school board will take a five-minute recess, a five-minute recess to rejoin at 7:05, but, uh...
Tables. Do you have to sit down in front?
Yeah, we're going to go into their... Should probably do it now, right?
Workshop? No, no, we can move it.
You wanna do it then? Okay.
Yeah.
Isn't that awesome? Oh, yeah?
Oh, with the nagging little sister. Do we, for the workshop, do we need to do the tables again?
Yes, so we'll stop and do the tables.
So then we'll have to stop and do the tables.
I know, I was gonna do it now, but he said, "Let's just get through it," and then...
I mean, do you wanna do it?
Great job.
Do you wanna do the tables?
For the workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely better to do it, 'cause they can't...
I just think it might...
Well, I know.
If it becomes a challenge, it might...
It, it, I mean, I was sick when I watched it. Bye, good job. Bye, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
See you later. I know, they're, well, they're coming the next...
It's the best.
Yeah, well, that's what you're here for.
You're holding the mic, like, from behind the screen.
The Pat Sajak mic.
I like a game show.
Then he hit the button, and I was like, "Oh."
I thought you should've grabbed that one off of the...
There's way more of us.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we'll just talk about that.
Oh, yeah, one minute. Okay, we're back in. Just wanna say thank you to the C.K. Burns School Lego Robotics team for that thrilling presentation, and congratulations to all your achievements. Uh, and that, uh, that team is made up of Caleb Burnier, Keenan Burgess, William McNaughton, Oliver Roburge, Fay Collins, Ava Pollack, Maya McIntosh, William Kendall, Griffin Muller Howard, and that is where the Saco Otter Butter, Inc. And the coaches are Anne Marie Han and Holly Trotter. Uh, thank you once again for all your, all your work, and, uh, congratulations on all your accomplishments. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, that is the approval of the school board meeting minutes dated January 8th and 15th. Is there a motion? School Board Member Walters?
Uh, I move we approve school board meeting minutes dated January 8th and 15th, 2020.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion made by School Board Member Walters, seconded by School Board Member Shimon. Any discussion? Any amendments? Seeing no amendments, no discussion, roll call votes, School Board Member Leary.
Yes.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shimon?
Yes.
School Board Member Mozden?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0. Uh, Agenda Item Seven is Correspondence. Item A is University of Southern Maine Writing Project.
Yeah, so we got correspondence, um, uh, from the University of Southern Maine that Kim Laverrier and Jessica Benway, both teachers at Saco Middle School, successfully completed the Invitational Summer and Fall Institute through the University of Southern Maine Writing Project. So congratulations to them. It's in your packet. I just wanna announce the good things that all of our teachers are doing in the district, so...
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Article Eight, Public Session. Nobody has signed up. Is there anybody wishing to participate in public comment? Seeing no public comment, moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Superintendent's Report. Item A, Updated Budget Timeline. Superintendent?
Yeah, so, uh, Jason and I met with Glenis and Brian, um, or, or the city manager and the finance director from the city, and in your packet, and we talked about this at finance, we updated, there are some dates that we needed from the city to do our joint workshops, and those are in there, and it's auto, automatically goes up on the website. So that is the, the most current budget timeline.
School Board Members, are there any questions for Superintendent DePatsy?
I, I...
School Board Member Walters?
Question, um, the Monday, February TBD. This is for the Joint Budget Overview with City Council. Still, yeah. So, yeah. Wondering which day in February.
Thought we had that down, so I'll, I'll go back and look at it, so...
Okay.
I believe that's February 24th, Monday, February 24th. It's February 17th is the Monday.
Yep.
So it'll be February 24th. Any other questions for Superintendent DePatsy? Seeing none, moving on to Agenda Item Ten, Chairs Report. Uh, with the, the chair not here, defer to the vice chair. School Board Member Shimon, do you have anything to report?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Eleven, Staff Report. Combined Principal Directors' Report for January 2020. It is in your packet. Uh, any questions? Any presentations?
Nope, there's no presentations. They're in there just for their review.
No presentations. Are there any questions from the school board members? No. Seeing no questions.
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm sorry.
School Board Member Walters?
I knew, I wrote it down somewhere, and I can't find it, I think, 'cause I have two copies, but I had one question. I did have one question. Sorry, I had a different copy. Um, my question was, and I think the two that, that might be able to answer it are here. Um, I just had seen, so in the Special Education Update, there was, it said of our 27 CDS students identified for potential entry, uh, to kindergarten to date. Um, so, so there's, so I heard, so it was 27 of CDS students that were identified that are gonna be, uh, moving into our district in the fall. And then I, I just wanted to ensure that the 18 that were reported in the pre-K report were included in that number. Oh, they're not.
Superintendent DePatsy, do we wanna bring somebody up to discuss this?
Do you guys wanna come up and explain? Do you wanna do like, we'll do CDS and then, if you feel good.
I believe, and I, I will defer to others, that the 18 are not all identified with, you know, with an IEP of the, of the pre-K students. The CDS students are all identified with an IEP, but that does not include the pre-K. Do we know how many, at this point, we have? Is it two in pre-K right now? We have referrals, but there, as far as those identified, we've certainly not, the 18.
Well, you...
In pro, okay.
But there are some students getting speech-language services, not through us, but through CDS. Or OT, or PT, or whatever that IEP says.
And, and there may be, among those, those CDS numbers, there may be some of those, if they're being serviced by CDS.
Okay, that, that was sort of my question. So, so, so can we assume that the 27 that have been identified, that number could potentially go up?
Yes.
Given, okay.
It, looking at past years...
It looks like it will, by the eyes.
That often happens, there, there are several in referral who are not necessarily those that are at, at pre-K program, they may be elsewhere, and they are in referral through CDS, and they are in the evaluation process, so that number can typically go up.
Thank you. Thanks.
Are there any further questions about the report? Seeing none, moving on to Article 12, Board Subcommittee's. Do we have a report from A, Personnel?
Nothing to report.
B, Finance?
Yes.
School Board Member Shimon?
We have minutes, um, that, um, from the meeting of January 15th, and I'll briefly go over the items that were on it, so for the, uh, for the public and to know what they are. Uh, the finance director reviewed the audited financials for fiscal year 2019, that's last year. Um, uh, and, uh, the school department had, we had a surplus that year of, uh, of, of $1.69 million, which is the first time that we've had a positive fund balance since separating from the RSU. Uh, and Jason reviewed some of the budget to actual review and expense categories, and he also reviewed the findings that the auditors commented on. Um, the only thing they commented on was the, uh, school activity funds. Some of the schools had deposits longer than one week, and a few invoices were missing, uh, but basically we got a very good report, um, from the auditors. Um, the, uh, the pace to that point of the year, January 15th, the budget to actuals was calculated to be about 50%, and it actually was 49.97%. Boy, is that close! And the, uh, uh, the patterning being right on target there. Um, and he also went into the confusion that's, that it's still there, on how expenses are being handled because of the $1.1, $1.1 million reduction from, um, that was ordered by the council. Um, and it's tricky, um, because, uh, uh, we had to make some reductions, we made some reductions, but the council's idea was that you take the rest of the money out of reserves that we had, uh, that you needed, um, and it, uh, it, it caused, and still causes confusion. A few areas that were unknown at the time of the budget discussed, uh, we're, at the time of the budget, we're discussed that are affecting this year's financials. Um, and, um, and the largest concern is the special education expense for our children attending Thornton Academy, and, uh, as we discussed earlier today, um, there's a six, uh, six, uh, $625,000, uh, uh, miscalculation, um, by, um, Thornton Academy, or a thing that we were not aware of, um, and are aware of now. Um, and a few other areas where we're over are legal fees and property insurance costs. Um, and, uh, uh, we do have a few areas of savings, including summer work, um, being less than bud, uh, budgeted, refinancing our buses in two positions that were not filled. Um, and, uh, we also, he also handed out explanation of the PATHS, P-A-T-H-S, program, which is main care billing, that's new this year. Um, we have 35 students in the program, and 12 of them cannot be billed. Um, all of this, there, there are definite specifications of what you can bill and what you can't bill. It's the first year of a program, and there, there's a lot of learning going on in, in the course of that. Of the 23 billable students, 11 are currently being billed for, four are needing addition, additional information in order to be billed, and eight are still in the testing, uh, parent meeting, uh, in, to, uh, and apparent meeting stages to obtain authorization in order to bill for, and we adjourned that meeting, um, just before, at 6:27, but just before the, uh, the board... meeting just before, at 6:27, but just before the board meeting. The tricky thing in that is that PATHS program, it's the first year of a program, we heard a report last meeting of, I should say, it's two meetings ago, about the effectiveness of that program. It does a lot of things for students. That's why we have it. And it appears that in the second year of such a program, you have a lot more, you have the knowledge of the first year, but you also have things already in place to get things going at the beginning of the year. That was what made it difficult to forecast revenue for this year. So we'll be talking about more of that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions? Seeing none of their C Infrastructure. Any report from the Infrastructure Committee?
Mr. Mayor?
School Board Member Johnston?
We do not have minutes because we have not had a meeting since the last board meeting. I'm sure there will be one upcoming before too long, but for now, there is no report.
Thank you. Moving on to Item D, Strategic. Is there a-
I think I could-
School Board Member Johnston?
I could also report on that. Our meeting was on January 28th, and I want to say that the minutes that you, that us board members have received in our packet are quite accurate and informative, with a couple of clarifications I want to make about attendance. Superintendent DePatsy could not attend that day because of illness, and although he is not a member of the committee as such, Stan Mazden did attend. So just to clarify who was actually present that day, I think I covered it all. I consider this meeting to be a really good workshop meeting. We covered, I think, 10 policies, which is a lot to do in an hour plus. We did not, I don't believe, come out of that meeting with pushing anything forward for first reading. However, I think we really worked hard on looking at what the policies were that we were supposed to attend to. Some of the policies were new, like we've never seen these before. And I think for myself, and maybe other members as well, when I see a policy that's new, I want to make sure that I really understand it thoroughly and why we're actually proposing it as a policy. Some of the policies that we looked at are new to the Saco School Department, but we sort of inherited from RSU 23. So they're new in a sense, but really not, but clearly need to be revised and reevaluated. So I think that two of the, well, A policy and an accompanying administrative procedure that we started, actually started the meeting with, was JIH questioning in searches of students, and then the administrative procedure. So I think that we were really trying to wrap our minds around why this was a new policy that we were asked to take on as a district. And I think we all had some concerns about it and some reservations. I'm sure that, you know, Steve or Emily, or, you know, even Stanley could address what their concerns were, but I felt like, for myself, that it was something that we really needed to research. It might even have been in discrepancy with some of the other policies that we do have already on the books, and I just want to say that I think it was a really good exercise in looking at what, I mean, we certainly, as a board, want to make sure that our students are safe, but I think we also want to make sure that they are not unfairly searched, let's say, or that they are subjected to that type of thing. So that's something that is definitely going to go to other resources, you know, such as the Saco Middle School Principal, the SRO, and probably, I'm hoping actually, a number of other administrators to really look at that and come back to the committee with some ideas and suggestions. And that's really long-winded. I didn't mean for it to be, but if anybody else wants to add to it, please do.
Thank you. Any other school board members want to comment on this?
I'll just-
School Board Member Shiman?
I think a quick comment that I'm fully agreeing with Beth Johnston on this, that we're being very careful, that we're not just rubber-stamping things that, it's not at all that way. We're looking into it very carefully as to are the things needed, and some of the things have been put onto us by the state, as almost, you need to have a policy on this, and we're saying, yeah, but why, and what's the precedent for this policy, and things like that, and the details of that policy. So I don't love policies, but we have to have them. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on, School Board Member Mazden?
Pardon me, I'm trying to get close to the mic there. Okay. The thing that comes to mind to me about policies is, and makes it so difficult to deal with, and that is the rapidity with which change occurs in the world that we live in. And that means your policies have to likewise change. And when you sit in on the meetings that Beth is talking about, one of the things that comes through is that even in Maine, many of these issues that you think are over there are here. And as a result, our policies have to reflect that, and they're not easily answered as to exactly what the approach is to them. I say that the district is doing very well in reviewing the policies that we do have and raising questions about the policies that we have and the form that they are, and the changes that need to be made in order to accommodate ourselves to the world we live in. And so it does take time. Not quickly done, but that doesn't mean that anybody's being negligent about it. It reflects what Beth is talking about, due diligence, and it's something that everybody should be looking closely at and not hesitating to bring up a question when you look at something and it doesn't make sense to you. Policies don't come from one person, two people, or a committee. They come from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Moving on to Item E, which is negotiations ongoing. I do believe we have a executive session on that later, so is there a need to have a report at this time? No report? Okay, moving on to Item F, School Board Liaison to the City Council.
I did attend the meeting and updated that information about our meeting today, and did relay to people the $900,000, approximately $900,000 addition from the state, money that was from the 279, which also obligates another $500,000 in taxpayer money as a match for that, so it's really a $1.4 million package from the state.
Thank you. That completes the committees. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, Old Business. There is no old business, so we are on to Agenda Item 14, which is, there an adjournment? Do we have a motion? School Board Member Johnston?
I move we adjourn the regular school board meeting and enter into workshop.
Sir, a second?
Second.
School Board Member Walters, seconds. School Board Member Leary?
Are we voting?
Yes.
Oh, yes. I didn't hear you say that part.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shiman?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazden?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston? Motion passes five zero. We'll now go into workshop. We will take a five-minute recess to reset the tables, and then we will begin the workshop. Yep. Okay, I think everybody's back. I think we can begin the workshop. Calling the workshop to order at 7:32, it looks like. First up, we have a Item A Workshop Conversation with Curriculum.
Wonderful. So the first hat I'm going to wear tonight is as the Curriculum Director for Saco Schools. That is, I oversee pre-K to eight, and the beauty of it is, it doesn't afford for content areas to sort of pit against each other, because it comes through me, and I use the strategic plan as our guidepost. So having a curriculum coordinator is pretty integral, and I'm pretty proud of the work that comes out of my office. Classroom Management 101, you do not hand out packets while you are speaking, because people will look through them. So I'm going to ask you to show some restraint, and don't turn the page until I ask you to, and I will know if you do, because, and there is something somewhat funny in it. So I'm not sure if I have enough for everyone, but, oh, and I think I gave you, where's the one with the paperclip?
I don't have it.
Found it. There you go. Hold restraint. Self-regulation, we do teach that. So curriculum instruction in numbers, I'm a very visual person, so I thought it would be helpful for you to see how the district curriculum budget goes into a pie chart. The bulk of the district budget is in K-8 training supplies. Making sure that if it's important, that we want students reading engaging books and books at their level, and it's important for them to have a rigorous math program, it's a must that pre-K through eight, there's a common thread throughout. I thought it would be helpful. I will not read through, you can go through and see the explanations, but if you were to take the training supplies, which is 42, approximately 42% of the curriculum budget, we only, we spend less than $60 per student throughout the year on district materials. So that is not much if you think of all the content areas, all of the social-emotional learning skills that students need, et cetera. So I thought you would appreciate having a number to that. I imagine that there are some districts in Maine that spend a lot more than $56 per student. The second-largest chunk, hourly work. Hourly work is both summer work, where we get the bulk of our work done because we don't have to, because there are no interruptions, and then each Tuesday afternoon is a curriculum afternoon, so teachers get paid. They're on either ELA teams, math teams, science teams, social studies teams, and those teams are liaisons between leadership and the classroom teacher, what's going well, what's not going well. They also lead the charge in what is fresh and new in professional development, and lead a lot of the abbreviated Wednesdays. So it's important that you have those liaisons, and you have teacher leaders who are working with leadership to provide that support. If you look at purchased professional services and employee training, how I discern those two, purchased professional services, things we need to do our job, absolute training that is the thread throughout pre-K to eight, like our connection with Research for Better Teaching and Skillful Teaching Graduate Course, and then employee training, I look at, what are those mandatory trainings? We've, today we had a mandatory child abuse prevention training. It's something that the state put into effect last year. It's mandatory, those things come up, and we're required to do that. So I want you to look at those totals for purchased professional services and employee training. We spend around $200 per staff person. Would you want to go to your doctor and know that that doctor only has access to $200 to be the best and brightest that he or she can be? We do pretty well spreading that money out, but it's important for you to see that we have a pretty bare-bones budget. We have extremely hard-working teachers and staff, and that is what it comes out to be. So at the bottom, what has a status quo budget? We have not added, I have not begged or asked for anything. I take what you give me, look at our strategic plan, and go accordingly. So what has a status quo budget for the past few years done for our student achievement? As you turn the page, it's important for you to know that you want- As you turn the page, it's important for you to know that you want green and blue to grow and yellow and red to shrink. I'll say that one more time. You want green and blue to grow and yellow and red to shrink. And that is exactly what you will see. As you look at the MEA/ELA data, you see the number of students each year. We first started testing on the MEA in 2015, 16. You can see the number of students. And then it's the percentage breakdown. What percent of our students in grades three through eight scored well below proficiency, well below state expectations? The yellow is below and then green is at and blue is above. So despite having bare bones, and I give all the credit to the teaching staff, the teaching leaders, our coaches, our administrators, we're seeing great growth in ELA, great growth in math. And when you turn the page to science, only fifth and eighth graders take science. So when you look at that fifth grade data, I hope that you feel really good about what you did in adding a STEM teacher to CK Burns because the data clearly shows that our science needed a little bit extra love at CK Burns. And I think you're going to see the green and blue grow like never before after students will have had. And you got to meet Mrs. Tradier tonight, which is exciting. And then four-year SMS science data, you can see that that is a huge strength for our district. And that is just in eighth grade and you can see the numbers for that. The next page, Coaching by the Numbers. I can't say enough about our instructional coaching model. When I went to a conference last year to talk about our instructional coaching model, I was introduced by a woman saying, you know, even Tom Brady has a coach. So if you don't think teachers deserve coaches, why would even Tom Brady, the greatest of all time, in my opinion? So Coaching by the Numbers, what our instructional coaches do, they personalize professional development for our teachers. And we have what is called a student-centered coaching model, so you could work with the same teacher throughout the year, but your goal would always change because it's always reflective on what the students know and are able to do. So I wanted to just give you a snapshot from last year and we will have even more data to share with you. But to think that 80% of students are directly impacted by a knowledgeable teacher whose pedagogy, whose content, understanding, whose passion for education, we have incredible coaches. So I wanted you to see that that is a reason why our numbers are improving as well. You may turn to the next page. The question at the top, how do we know our abbreviated Wednesdays are providing the support our staff need? How do we certify new learning so that teachers can maintain their certifications? Imagine if we didn't have a process in place for certification, if we didn't have a process in place for teachers to print off a transcript. So part of this is mandatory and part of it is based on a quote I love by Todd Whitaker, "Nothing in education happens randomly." We have processes in place to get feedback from teachers on how their abbreviated Wednesdays are working for them. And this is just a snapshot up to date, effective today. 72% of our teachers have rated their abbreviated Wednesday learning as above average or outstanding. 87% have indicated that they were likely or extremely likely to implement the learnings from that experience. And that is our hope, that what you're learning today, you start to implement tomorrow. So it's meaningful. So I thought that would be helpful for you. And then as you will see, I always listen to what Stan says. And Stan wanted to know some information on our EL population. So if you look at the sheet that has the green and yellow at the top, don't turn that over yet, Stan. Yep, good, you're there. Don't turn it over, Stan. Nope, don't do it. You're good, you're good. Okay, and you'll see why in a minute. So four years ago, when your chart indicates that we were at our lowest with 61 EL students and then we went to 60, and then we had a spike in 17, 18 of 68. Last year, 55. I thought it would be... We have no control. Last week, when Special Ed was talking to you about how if a student shows up, you do what you have to do, right? Everyone is entitled to an education. And so EL is something that is beyond our control. I can't say enough about the support that our superintendent has given our EL teachers. When a newcomer comes in and knows absolutely no English, imagine how hard that is to get that student prepared and ready to learn. So at the bottom, I thought you'd like to see that this year we have 66 pre-K to 12 EL students. And look at the variety of languages. I'm not going to read them because I do not want to mispronounce them, but the highest Spanish and Arabic. And then you'll see we have six French-speaking students and the list goes on. Most of them are one, but a lot of languages, a lot of diversity. It's pretty wonderful. And I can't say enough, we have the best EL teachers in the state. And there are four hardworking women. Three of them are part-time, one is full-time. No, two are part-time, two are full-time. And they just give 100%. We are very, very lucky. And then finally, the last page for curriculum. Can anyone tell me why I titled this page Stan's Demand? Can anyone remember last year at this time? Why would I title it Stan's Demand?
Stan. Through you patiently. Why would she title it Stan's Demand?
And I expect you to autograph that for me later, Stan. Last year after I had presented, Stan got on a soapbox and I think he'd admit that. And he yelled at us and said, "I want to know what is going to make us the best we can be. I don't want you just going through the motions." Not that we ever do go through the motions. So I took that seriously this year. And if we had all the money in the world, my response to Stan's Demand would be district-wide library attention, district-wide SCL coach or coaches, one more K-2 math coach. Right now, we currently share a K-2 coach for math between two buildings, which is not easy. One more K-2 technology coach we currently share. More money for classroom libraries because research shows the more good literature you put in front of kids, the more literate and lovers of reading they will be. More hourly work budget. Right now, our hourly work supports the content areas, but I would love to be able to support technology, SCL, wellness. Let's go 5210. Those are currently committees that participate and they volunteer their time, so it would be nice for them to earn some hourly time. And then more employee training for our job alikes. Our job alikes are PE, health, music, art, school counselors, media, health, libraries, all in there. But it would be so nice if we could assure that every year you get to go to your state conference and meet with colleagues and whatnot. So Stan, I did my homework. I realize that we don't have any money for this, but if money were not an option, these would be my answers to your question. So that concludes the curriculum portion of this presentation. What questions do you have of me?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the school board members? School Board Member Shime?
Yeah, I have a comment. I really appreciate the information about the detailing because I didn't know much, Willie, that goes in that area. And the areas that are being covered, you know, it seems to be, you know, they have to be covered. So it's not just something that you can ignore. But I appreciate the detailing on these areas because it's educational for us and I hope for the public as well.
Are there any other questions? I just, I had two questions. I'm looking at the school department curriculum report in the budget book on page three of four under the District Wide 900 series. And what I'm looking at is line item 2210-51500-900 under stipends. And it seems that there's a large increase, a $12,950 increase from last year's budget to this year's budget in stipends. What stipends are these? Just for everyone's...
Yeah, it actually was a negotiated, based on the negotiated contract. I'd have to pull up my list of stipends that were added. Do you know which ones?
I put on this sheet as well, Mayor, that these are per contract. They're district-wide, they cover everything from safety, we have to have a chemical hygiene officer, curriculum leadership to teacher support. We are mandated to have mentors to our new teachers and we have a few. We have quite a few. And every new teacher needs a mentor. So the increase is to account for how many mentors we have, but the stipends, it's the range of everything from safety to curriculum to state mandates.
Thank you. Superintendent?
So we will be reviewing that. That's in your packet. But we did have a stipend committee that actually had to expand some of those stipends. And that's why there's an increase because some of these needed to be put in there. Does that make sense? So you'll have that in about 10, I don't know, 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was under 2210-53000-900. Purchased professional services, and it looks like it's an increase of $25,000 from last year to this year. Purchased professional services, what is that?
That actually was part of the $1.1 million reduction. So it's just restoring it back to its original budget.
What's it for?
Again, Mayor, it's on my notes that I gave you, but I did not read through them. So it could be for district speakers, which would be a very minute, but if we needed to bring a district speaker in, cultural proficiency is a huge topic and equity. So we may want to bring in a speaker to address everyone on how to handle ourselves better. We take great pride in Skillful Teaching Course. It's a graduate course that we expect every new teacher to take so that everyone has the same language around high expectations, clarity of instruction. What does it mean to have a growth mindset instead of a fixed mindset? And it's very pricey. So that is part of that, as well as administrators. Any thread that goes throughout pre-K to eight that we have to make sure people are trained, we purchase the services for that. Everything from the kick-up information I gave you to help us track who's maintaining their certifications and whatnot. So a lot goes into that little chunk, even though it might seem like a big chunk, it's not.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Any further questions from the board? School Board Member Mauston?
And I'm going to address it to that end of the table. Those three. Primarily those two, meaning the superintendent and the curriculum. My question is, it's obvious that we're making some improvements. You can see that in the graphs that you've presented and what direction things are moving in. My question is, are we moving at a pace that's appropriate for our system? Or could we do better? And if so, what do we have to do to do that?
Money, money, money. All we, the only thing we have to compare is to the state comparisons. How do students across the state do compared to us? I have just concluded a very lengthy analysis of our MEA data where I've gone through every grade level and remember MEA, third grade through eighth grade. I looked at all of the data points and how are students compared to the state. I also use the colors from here. That blue is exceeding, green is at, yellow is just below. When I look at math, we are at or above state where the other state students are. Only one class was at the 67th percentile and that was sixth grade and I attribute that to it's a tough transition year. But the other two, 75% or 83% at or above where the state, other state students are scoring. So as an example, our third grade students, when they take the math MEA, 83% of the time they're at or above. In this past year, every grade level in math was above state expectations in math. Oh, excuse me, there was one data point in eighth grade. They were below state expectations, one percentage point. So you're getting so much out of your teachers and so much out of your leadership. You really are. And in ELA, the same thing is true. I look at this data and when it comes to writing data, we're in the blue. When it comes to reading data, we are mostly in the green and blue. And the two areas in yellow are 60%. So your teachers are working really hard to move students forward.
And just also globally, and I keep saying this all the time, when we look at the per pupil cost as compared to all the Cumberland County, New York County, and we got to do another analysis of that, we are, I think we were like, what, 16 out of 18 last year? And our scores are going up. So when Julie says money, you know, we are scoring higher while other districts are spending more money per pupil. And we're doing that because of, you know, what she said is our teachers and coaches work really, really hard. It's hard now with the MEA because we can't see the other districts, which they changed that this year. So we were comparing and we were creeping up with some of the other areas that are more wealthier than we are. So that was really good indication. So we can still do that, but we have to call the curriculum director or assistant, you know, it just takes a lot of time to get all that information. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the areas, I know that we are specific in the literary and the math areas, but I always feel it's important to motivate students wherever they're strong. And the arts areas, is that part of, are we encouraging that kind of development as well?
Absolutely, but we're not assessed on... We are not assessed on the Unified Arts, but you can be sure that the leadership team in Saco is very committed to arts education, music education, when you've walked through the halls and seen the...
I've seen some of that and I think when you get motivation of students in a particular area, it affects those state scores also. I hate to put an education that's totally focused on state scores because it's short-sighted because it isn't where people develop. They develop according to what motivates them as a whole person. And it's a danger in the way, it's a danger in having government control. I have a very good Republican attitude in that. I don't like control from above. And it's necessary, but I think we need to develop the whole child internally.
Well, the good news to that is you have a state educational commissioner in Pendarmakin who is all about whole child. And she has asked our feedback. We have this assessment because we need money from the federal government. If you don't have a universal assessment, but I was in a meeting with her a couple weeks ago and she said, you know, are you finding any value with this assessment? And we do find value. What we have, especially in reading, we're noticing across the board, our students are excellent at comprehending what they're reading. But we found that we need to do more work on analysis and interpretation. So if we're going to provide our teachers more skills on analysis and interpretation, that spans everything. How do you interpret good artwork? How do you interpret good music? So it does span, but unfortunately, this is what we have as our barometer for now.
Are there any other questions? School Board Member Leary?
I love seeing the increases, but my question is, and I'm curious, I just have to ask this, all the additional positions we put in last year, I actually thought there'd be more of an increase in the greens and the blues than what we're actually seeing. There's some in a couple areas, but other areas it's less than 1%. So I just, I just am hoping that in this coming year, we see even more increases because we have those same positions. And I think, I won't speak for the board, but my interpretation and impression last year was that we would expect to see maybe more improvement than we actually did.
That is such a fair question, Lynn. And I will tell you, when you're looking at these, you're looking at third through eighth grade all combined. I have data here that will show you, our third grade data is off the charts. And that's because of positions you've put in place, coaching that you've supported at the K-2 where the foundation is built. There are successes at every grade level, but when you look at like our interventionists that you've supported, that's the... that's the yellow and the red shrinking, and it's happening. So, I actually was surprised to see as much positive growth because it takes time. There's something called an implementation dip, and it takes time. But we could not be more proud of our staff and our leadership for what we're seeing.
And I think we got to go pull you back to September when we did the strategic plan and we did all of those, there's other assessments that we used to measure our growth. This is just one, like, triangulation of data. So, if you went back to September, which is all on the website, we have other areas that show growth as well. The other red part is also special ed. They are working really hard to close that gap as well.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, moving on to item A, pre-K.
Okay. Now, to transition to my other hat, let's do a pre-K thing. I'm going to say, "Hocus Pocus," and what do you think you say? Everybody focus. I learned that. It didn't focus, it didn't work, but, okay. So, I want to set the stage for you. If you are a kindergarten student in our district, whether you're at Young or Fairfield, you get off the bus, your principal is there to meet you, you go in, and before you even get to your classroom, you've had a number of adults who have said hi to you, asked how you are. It could be the custodian, it could be the administrative assistant, it could be the school counselor, it could be one of five Unified Arts teachers who are just amazing at what they do. It could be one of our great special education staff members, a psychologist. It could be any number of those greeting you before you even get to the classroom. I have drunk the pre-K Kool-Aid. I love being with those four-year-olds. I, I can't say enough about it. But it's very important for you to hear that our staff, the staff we have, each classroom has one teacher and one ed tech. That's all those kids have. It's bare bones. And when you heard earlier, I'm so thankful that you asked, that you pointed out 18 referrals. So, that means there are 18 kids that have come into our pre-K who need a little bit more. They might need speech, they might need some gross motor strengthening. It could be behavioral. There was no school counselor to support my staff member in how to help that child self-regulate. There was no OT or PT. It's a huge, it's a long process to get CDS. I can't say enough about how CDS York has been, the questions that they've, they've put up with from us. But it's important for you to know that what you are getting out of your pre-K is magical because those teachers are just amazing and with very limited support. I can't be at three places at once. I, I have goals to get there, I'm following our professional growth plan. But I just, I can't say enough, and I'm working so hard to keep our teachers happy because they are amazing. We are following the pre-K for me curriculum, which is a state play-based, based on Boston Public Schools. It's amazing, but I've provided no training. On abbreviated Wednesdays, I have our more experienced teachers show what they are doing. We're using technology to record each other and then watch that. But it's just important for you to know that amazing things are happening, but it's bare bones. And it's three separate, I, three separate locations. I don't know if Jason and Dom want me to speak to anything. We don't, we're not adding positions, we're not in a position to do that. Location, location, space.
I think the only thing I will add is that some of you, the infrastructure committee, I know Beth, when you were talking about, there was no meeting, but there is a meeting tomorrow for the Infrastructure Steering Committee. So, three board members, three members of, two members of council, the mayor and the city manager and myself are meeting, I think it's just got canceled actually because of something else, but it might have got canceled, maybe it didn't. But they're meeting to talk about the larger issue of space. And there's lots of ideas being thrown around, so that's all.
If it's been canceled, I haven't got the notification yet.
So, my final point, I talked about how a kindergarten student goes into one of the schools, and they have. So, with our three locations, two of the locations are not only under Maine Department of Education and Saco's Department of Education, they're also under DHHS, which comes with its whole, and I know you're aware of some of, a whole line of licensing and certification that we have to adhere to. Our teachers who had not been up to date on their vaccinations had to go and pay for their own Titer. I don't know Titer very well, but I think I said it right. Just, it's hard to realize all that those teachers face on a day-to-day basis and what our pre-K kids are getting out of it. I can't say enough, and it's fabulous, but I just wish it could be better for our teachers, for sure.
Okay, are there any questions from board members? None? School Board Member Leary?
I didn't see you give us a stand list on this one, but what would you say would make it better for your teachers? We know everyone in one building, that's a given, but what else would you say?
Lynn, I thought you were going to ask me how much I love your grandson. When I went through those lists of positions that are at K-2, if even we had a third of those positions, five more people, it would be amazing. I'm just so worried about burning out our staff. Instructional coaching around early childhood development, we're doing the best we can, but that would definitely be a need. Right now, we are bringing in art, music, gym, we're bringing those people in. But if we could have our own onsite, we have to maintain an eight-to-one ratio at all times. If one little one has to go to the bathroom in one of our locations, someone's getting a walkie-talkie, where are you at, can you come support? So, we need more people. We need more, you know, a school counselor who can, can help when, when those kids are escalating and they need, you know, to, to take deep breaths. It's hard for a teacher to stop when she has 15 others that are in need of some attention as well. So, more staff to support what we have. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I do love your grandson very much.
School Board Member Johnson.
So, Julie, obviously, you're very enthusiastic about these teachers and very proud of the work that they do and see the kids that they work with as coming, you know, coming a long way over a short amount of time. And obviously, I just heard you say that we need more staff to support that system. I'm curious though, because I'm just curious, are we retaining the teachers that we have hired?
I'm trying so hard. We, I cannot say enough, we have seven of the best pre-K teachers, and their ed techs. I can't remember who it was said to me today, I think it was one of the, we have some retired teachers who come in on a rotation to do STEM and library and music and movement. And they shake their head, "How did you get such great people?" I'm like, surround yourself with great people and good things happen. But yeah, I'm trying so hard to keep them happy because they're amazing.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Seeing none, I did have a question referring to the budget book. And I'm looking under ed tech, health insurance, there's a $31,613 increase, which is a 224% increase. Just, are we looking at significant increases in healthcare?
No, so, if you, if you, the way we budget a new position for the following year is we kind of lump, do a lump sum dollar amount. For example, if it's an ed tech, it's $35,000. That includes their salary and benefits, but I put all that amount on the salary line. So, it doesn't distribute the benefits. So, in theory, and I have to pull the report up to see if my theory is correct, that the salary line should be less than the prior year. How much is it? So, that's supposed to be the offset is that the salary that is included, I'm sorry, my reports are lagging for some reason right now. Yeah, so it's night, so the salary range, so again, the previous year was $195,000 was what was budgeted for. That was for four ed techs. And it appears to, and it's usually budgeted off of a normal salary in single subscriber insurance, may one or two, may have got an adult child. But it's not, it's not a significant increase per person, it's just the way that, now that we know who's in that position, next year will be a closer one-to-one carryover. Does that make sense? So, same with a teacher, like, so if you look at the teacher line right above it on page one, very, very last one on the bottom, we put, geez, I came in pretty close too, but we budgeted for additional teachers there, and it's only, it's only a little, yes. Apparently, we might need to be upping our $70,000 and $35,000 lines for our employees, so. But yeah, this is a true cost of who's actually in the position now. So, when we, so when we did, so when we did budget it, again, we, we don't put the, when we budget new positions, we don't put any of the health, dental, or any of their insurance in. We just put a lump sum number holding their placeholder. And looking at this, even with the teachers, it looks like we hired more teachers in the pre-K higher than the $70,000 for both salary and benefits.
And is, is that the same reason why you're, you're looking at a $55,346 increase to the instruction health line as well?
Yes, yep, exactly. So, now that the, now that those, so prior to that, the $14,000 was only for two employees having health insurance. Now, we have seven employees with health insurance. So, that's a true actual, actual cost for those employees' health insurance. No, it's separated by the line.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to adult education.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dave Durkey, I'm the Adult Education Director. Very happy to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our budget. The first thing I want to say is thank you to the board for your continuing support of adult education. We have had and still have a very strong adult ed program in the communities of Saco and Old Orchard Beach. I'll just say a couple of quick things about the program before I talk about the budget. We are a two-community adult education program, and it is a partnership between Saco and Old Orchard Beach. RSU 23 acts as our employer, but it is an equal partnership between the two communities. And this partnership has been in place for quite some time, predates me even, so back into the 90s. So, I do want to talk a little bit about the budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. You'll note from your budget booklets that the budget is not significantly changed from last year on the expense side. The only changes that it includes are salary increases and increases in benefits. What you will note is that there is some changes in revenue. Now, I started with this program back in 2001 and became director in 2009. And this is the first year that I can remember that I'm coming to the board and actually asking for more money. And I'd like to talk about that a little bit. You'll note in your budget booklets that I did a nice overview for you comparing FY '19 and FY '20 revenues. And specifically, I'm going to talk briefly about the local allocation. And that is where the increase lies. I am asking both communities for additional money this year, and it does amount to approximately $34,000. So, this is in excess of what I have typically asked for in the past. And this is an amount that would be divided equally between both communities. And I want to talk about the reason I'm asking for that. There are a couple of reasons for that. One is that when I became director in 2009, the program started a period of significant growth and development. And since the time that I became director to the present, on average, we've added about 650 adult learners per year to our program. So, as of last year, we were serving 2,000 adult learners and offering in excess of 450 classes. So, we went through a period of growth where we basically were generating more revenue from our courses and also from our state subsidy, from some of our grants. And we developed quite a significant positive fund balance. For those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, you'll, you'll know that over the last probably four or five years, I've been fiscally responsibly paying down that positive fund balance. So, we've come into balance, for lack of a better word, and that is one of the reasons why I'm asking for the additional funding. Another reason for the funding, and this funding, I should indicate, really goes to our academic and vocational programs. Our enrichment program, for those of you that know our program well, is basically self-sustaining. So, the additional funds that I'd be asking for are really going to be directed to our academic program. And there's a couple of things that we'd like to do there with this fund, with these funds, with our existing staffing. We have had this year an increase in our ESL population. We're currently serving 45 ESL students in an academic program that probably will serve approximately 250 students this year. So, we'd like to begin to expand some of those programs. And we're doing that in a variety of ways, not only through the local funding and support of the district, but also through partnering with various organizations, like we've just started a partnership with Catholic Charities of Maine, who does a lot of work with our refugee population. So, definitely the ESL population. And then, I also wanted to talk a little bit about an interesting program that we have under our adult education umbrella, which is an alternative education program. When I started back in 2001, I started as the alternative education teacher. And at that time, the districts and adult education began to recognize that a lot of younger students, 16- to 20-year-old students, were dropping out of school and coming to adult education. And indeed, to this day, about 30% of our academic population falls between the ages of 16 and 20. So, at that time in 2001, we started a partnership, a collaboration between our adult education program, Thornton Academy, and Old Orchard Beach High School. So, through our adult education program, we are serving high school-age students. They are getting a Thornton Academy diploma or an Old Orchard Beach High School diploma. And we're trying to, in a creative way, understand what was happening in the world of adult education and continuing to serve an at-risk youth population. So, in a nutshell, those are basically the reasons that I'm asking for the larger-than-usual increase in our local allocation for this year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? School Board Member Mauston.
You're talking about the changes that you're seeing in your student population. Are you seeing trends that we need to be starting to think about being prepared to respond to?
Well, I think that, I mean, I started in adult education in 1996. And the demographics of traditional adult education programs have changed significantly since that time in that we're seeing a much larger, younger youth population that's coming to adult education. You know, this, this is one of the things that we're trying to recognize and to, and to handle, and I think that one of the creative ways and innovative ways that we've always done it in this district is through this small alternative education program that I've been referencing, so that we can, you know, provide more supports and structures for an adolescent population through an adult education program. You know, the, the, these young people are dropping out of school and they're coming to adult education, and I think it's important that we're able to offer them some other alternatives besides just seeking a high school equivalency diploma. So, I think, I think we're, we're doing that, we're recognizing the changing demographics, and we have things in place to, to serve that population.
These, these people that have dropped out and they're coming back, that you were just mentioning, is that number growing in terms of the number, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this here. I guess, I guess to start off with, the students, are they new to the district? And now they're discovering that maybe they need to do something? Or are they people that have always been there all along, but the job market has changed and as a result, they too have to make some adjustments?
Well, I think, I mean, that's an, an interesting question, and I think that the population in adult education is very dynamic. And one of the things that's always interested me about adult ed is that there are 1,000 different stories and 1,000 different reasons, and a wide variety of ages that people to come, that come to adult education. So, to answer your question specifically, sometimes, we do have students that come from another district, who are young people, 16 to 20. And we do have a close relationship with the guidance departments, both at Old Orchard Beach High School and at Thornton Academy. And, you know, we use all of our resources to try to find the right program for that student. And that program could be one of our local high schools, it could be the alternative education program that's under our umbrella of adult education, or it could be a high school equivalency diploma. We no longer do the GED in Maine, but we do something called the HISAET. So we try to offer the options that suit the needs of the student, regardless of their age. So those are some of the, the structures for young people, but for older students, you know, we have college transitions grants, we have a variety of resources that we can, that we can offer to students. So, on the one hand, it makes it, you know, very interesting and exciting to work in adult education, and it definitely keeps us on our toes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? School Board Member Shimon.
Yes. The, the percent of increase that you're asking for doesn't, doesn't appear to be too drastic, doesn't appear to be that high.
It's a 13% increase.
It is.
Yes, which, which amounts to about $34,000. And it's, I.
It's split.
It's, it's, and it's split. It's significant to me, and I want to make sure that you know that it's going to be used well, and it's going to serve students directly.
Considering the value, what, what this program is providing, I, I don't consider that a high increase.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
So is the 30, excuse me, is the $34,000?
So, does that mean 17?
Seventeen.
And that, and that 17, is that in addition to the 5631, or, or, or in this, I know that's, that's not exactly the, the right question, but is that in addition to what the both parties, both communities already give?
In addition, yes. Last, last year, the amount was approximately 246,000, which was divided equally between the two communities, and this year, the amount I'm requesting is 280,000, which is a $34,000 increase, which again, would be divided equally between the two communities.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? School Board Member Shimon.
In the past, you had put money into it, from, from money that was surplus money from prior years.
Yes, that's correct.
You can't do it this year.
I can't do it this year.
There's, it is right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I just ask, I'd like to thank the board for their support, and also, could I ask the board to be excused? Because they only have a babysitter till 8:30 tonight, sorry. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the presentation. If there are no questions, we'll move on to food service, thank you.
My name is Sue Morel, I'm the Director of School Nutrition. Thank you for the opportunity of having me here tonight to talk about the Saco School Nutrition Program. The School Nutrition Program budget is separate from the School Department budget, because the program's financially, financially self-sufficient. The Saco School Nutrition Program doesn't receive any funding from the City of Saco taxpayers, and since our budget's separate, we don't have any RADS planned for next year to tell you about. The proposed budget for next year just includes a very minimal increase for staff, cost of living, probably 2%, health, any health insurance increases, as well as small projected increases in the cost of food and supplies. The sources of revenue for next year include about $255,000 from parent and staff payments for meals, breakfast and lunch, and à la carte, about $440,000 federal subsidy for student meals for the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program during the school year, as well as, next year it'll also include a subsidy for the Summer Meals Program as well, that we'll be holding, and probably $5,000 worth of, from catering, we do small catering for the district. And this amount of revenue, almost $700,000, it covers all of our program expenses, it covers all of our staff labor, benefits, food, paper products, supplies, kitchen equipment, propane, maintenance and repairs, and we're, we're able to cover all of those expenses with that revenue coming in. We've been financially self-sufficient in the black and received no local funding for the past 14 years. We currently have a fund balance of approximately $100,000, and we, we try to, it's our little savings account, so that if, God forbid, some big piece of equipment like a walk-in freezer or cooler goes down, or dishwasher, that could set us back 30 grand. So that's kind of like our savings, and also too, if we come across a year where we don't make it in, in the black and we have to, we can draw from that. And currently, we're only one out of about 15 school nutrition programs in the State of Maine who are in, in the black, so we're trying to hold on to that status as long as we can, but it's getting difficult. And some of the program highlights for this year is our, our January, this year, lunch participation has increased 15% over last January, breakfast has increased 30% from this January, since last January. We implemented a breakfast card at Saco Middle School to try to just make breakfast more accessible to Saco Middle students, and that has resulted in a 64% increase in the number of Saco Middle students that are getting a healthy breakfast and preparing them for their, their learning. And we also continued this year our universal free breakfast in the classroom at Fairfield School, and also at Burns School, where we deliver breakfast to the classrooms every morning, and all children, regardless of if they're approved for free or reduced meals, or they're, they're paid, they all have access to a breakfast and they're not charged for it. And we also, this year, we provided universal, universal free breakfast and lunch to our pre-K students. And some of the, I, I don't know if, I don't want to read this to you, you could just read it yourselves, and the essence of time, just some of the reasons that we're able to remain financially self-sufficient is we just have, we just careful menu planning, incorporating those USDA foods that we get that are valued at like $50,000, and we get Department of Defense Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, about $10,000 worth of that that we incorporate in the menu. We're offering more and more menu choices for the students, so that there's something for everyone, so to increase the likelihood that they're going to be customers and eat with us. We just get staff feedback and from the students, just, we walk around, we, we observe plate waste and trash waste and see what's going well and what isn't, and if there's a menu item that bombs, we just, we're not going to serve that a whole lot, and stick with the, the popular things that are also healthy for the kids. And we just got really great staff, we've got three wonderful kitchen managers who are just such great shoppers, and they know exactly what to order. We've got cooks that are wonderful, the best cooks ever, three of them, and just, our staff just love kids, they're just kid magnets, they, they just love their jobs and they love feeding children healthy foods, and I think that's really helped with participation, because they, they see the kids every day, every year, you know, that they're in that school, and like a teacher that they might have just for one year, they see the, the food service staff all the time, so. So we've got a really great program, we're really proud of it, and, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the school board members? School Board Member Shimon?
On, on the nutrition aspect of things, I, there's a lot of fuss, I read in the newspaper or things about the, the federal requirements and so forth, and, and things critical that kids are, the things are thrown in front of the kids they won't eat. How do you go about deciding what, what the nutritional decisions about what, what's, what they're presented with, what, what offerings they're given?
Well, the entrees contain the protein and the grains, usually, and we incorporate our USDA foods that we get, we get 90% lean hamburgs sticks, we've got cheddar cheese and mozzarella cheese, and diced chicken, roast turkey, so we always incorporate that in the menu, offer several choices. The, the fruits and the veggies can, probably that's, that would be the waste. We, we have beautiful salad bars and we stock them with, try to do fresh, and fresh fruit as well as canned fruit that we get free from the government USDA, and then fresh veggies, sometimes cooked veggies, they prefer fresh veggies with their ranch dip, they're more likely to eat them, and they, they have to take a fruit or a veggie in order for it to count as a school lunch, so. So we just do the best we can to just encourage them. Children are more likely to consume something that they have had the power to select themselves from the salad bar, so, rather than us just serving it here, eat this, you know, so, they do pretty well.
Thank you. School Board Member Mazden.
I always enjoy hearing your, your report each year. I wish you had some starters that you could spread on the guy sitting next to you, so that he wouldn't have, be submitting for so many building repairs that need to be made. I, and I am obviously kidding, I'm well aware of the fact that he's got the problem that's the opposite from yours, in terms of revenues and where it comes from. But this, to me though, is not deny, that you do a pretty good job as far as management of that program. You're increasing it, you're putting more variety in, and you're able to do it without causing requests to come to us for funding. And I am not overlooking that, because we all know, if you look around at the school systems around us, we, there aren't many that are doing what you're doing. And, and it's something that should be recognized, and thus the reason why I'm thanking you for the management job that you are doing.
Thank you very much.
You usually bring us good news. So, as long as I've been on the school board, Sue, I think you've done an amazing job of managing the program. I think it's been consistently improving over time. It, it's exciting to hear that you're getting, you know, you increase the number of kids that are involved, you know, it's sort of an up and down thing, I'm sure, over time, but it's really good to know that the participation is good. And I think the philosophy of the program is really good too, because the healthy and desirable food that kids will actually eat, you know, is, is a wonderful thing. I do have two questions, just for clarification, and the first one is, you mentioned early on here, that we have a, you have a current fund balance of approximately $100,000. And I was just curious, because my memory won't, you know, recall it, is that sort of up or down? I mean, I know it fluctuates over time, but that seems like a pretty good balance. Is that sort of higher than you've seen it, or lower?
We, we've done well not to touch it much and just leave it, it, it was much higher when we were RSU 23. It's, it started out like almost double that, but then we split up, so I've just been kind of holding, trying to hold on to that as our little savings account for a rainy day, for something to break down, yeah.
Okay, and my other question is, I know last year we had a little bit of discussion about the number of students that were eligible for free and reduced lunch, or meals. So I think it was, it went down a little bit last year, are you seeing it come up a little bit at this point?
No.
Is it staying sort of level, or?
It's, it's, the free and reduced percentages are, are going down, and not only here, but in all districts, and it's just, the, the economy is, is booming right now. Unemployment in our nation, in our state, is the lowest, I think, in history, and so we're just finding a lot of people who qualified for free and reduced in the past have jobs now, and so they're just not in need, and also food stamps participation has, has dropped down, because people just, they have employment now and they don't qualify, so.
Okay, is it dropping significantly, or is it a couple of percentage points?
It, it is, because just, like, five years ago, Fairfield School was at 50% free and reduced, and now it's at 36. So, yeah, it, it is.
Okay, well, thank you for answering those questions for me.
Sure.
School Board Member Leary.
Hi, great job, Sue.
Thank you.
My question is, is, have we, why didn't we not have universal free breakfast at Young School? That's the only school that is not in this. And I'm curious on why we can't get that in there for Young School. Yeah, and, and that is because Young School's free and reduced rate is only 16%. So, yeah, so, we, we receive reimbursement from the federal government for the free and reduced meals that we serve at Burns and Fairfield by sending the meals to the classroom. We, we get participation from almost 90% of our free and reduced kids at Burns and Fairfield, so when we get reimbursed from them, that money covers the cost of the paid kids at Burns and Fairfield, from, from whom we're not collecting the, the $1.60 for the paid. So it's, it's kind of a wash, so to do that at Young, where it's mostly. That's what I'm curious on, what the cost would be for us to get that into Young, so that all the kids in our district get this free breakfast. Yeah, I'd, I'd have to look into that. It, it's probably going to be like $20,000 or more, and we've got an issue at Young where we don't have the refrigeration or the storage space, we're already bursting at the seams, Mike can attest to that, we already need significant electrical work, we don't even have room for more standalone coolers, now that we've added the Young, pre-K at Young School, we keep blowing fuses, so that's. A cooler outside, you can have a walk-in cooler that's outside, like, it's attached to your building, but it's not necessarily in the building, but you walk into it and it's really outside the building. And that would cost 30 grand alone, just for that, so. I know, but I'm just thinking, like, I would love to see this consistent across our district. Yeah, I hear, yeah. Just feel that this one school is pulled out of that, and I. Yeah, and so is Saco Middle, too, you know, they, they don't get universal free breakfast in the classroom. But the, the reason for the universal free breakfast in the classroom is to, to target those, those free and reduced kids that prob, that may not be eating a breakfast at home, so we're bringing it right to them in the classroom where they are pretty much going to eat it. Because if we just allow breakfast in the cafeteria, then they're out in the pla, the class, the playground playing in the morning, if they do get in. If they do get into the cafeteria for breakfast, you can't fit everybody in there because, you know, there's, like, it burns, you can't fit 600 kids in the cafeteria at once. So, you're never going to feed all those free and reduced kids breakfast if, if it's, unless it's sent to the classroom.
I think it's a great idea and I just, I would question, I, I know you're saying only 16% free and reduced at Young, but I can tell you from experience, my kids would rather sleep that extra five minutes than have that breakfast that's sitting at the table.
Yeah.
And so, when it was, when they were at Burns, they would eat at Burns every day. They would not eat at home, even though everything was on the table ready for them, they'd rather sleep in. So, I really, and research shows that that breakfast meal is so important.
Yep.
For learning.
For sure.
And I just think that, to me, an extra $20,000 in the total budget of whatever million, millions of dollars this whole budget is, is a minuscule amount.
But something we could do at Young School is do grab and go breakfast, which is what we do at Saco Middle School. And that's that the children come in and if their bus is coming in just as school's starting or being dropped off as school's starting, they can grab a breakfast in the cafeteria and then go and if they're allowed to eat it in their classroom at the very start of the day. So, we could do grab and.
Yeah. But we just wouldn't be able to afford to just, that's free for everybody. I might be able to figure it out. Sorry.
School Board Member Walters. Cause I can remember having this conversation last year too and, and asking that same question of like, how can we make it so that there's universal free breakfast across the entire district? And I, I think it's something we should really look into because I know the science is definitely behind a healthy breakfast is a great start to any academic day. So, anyway, I just, I think it's something that I would really advocate strongly to figure out a way to make it happen. And it feels like it would be more equitable. I know that there's, you know, we're looking at the free and reduced rates, but it just, I don't know, it seems, it seems like something we should be able to figure out.
So, it, it sounds like there's some consensus to have a service enhancement for, for.
If I could just get back to you, we can talk. I'm also carefully monitoring this year's budget and we're already in the hole, large, 120 pre-K kids free breakfast. And so, yeah, correctly. So, so we're already carefully monitoring it, so I'm just hesitant to taking on more. Certainly talk about it and consider it and see what we could do.
Superintendent.
So, Sue, you can come back with some of the data that they're asking for, some of the board members. And I would say not to take it from her fund that she has. If you want to add it, you would add it to the whole budget. So, you would add like $30,000 to it.
As a service enhancement.
Correct. But that's up to you as you guys, once it's your budget, you, once Sue gets that money back, information back, then you guys can decide that, okay? Sound good?
Any further questions? Seeing none, moving on to transportation and maintenance.
My name's Mike, I'm the maintenance and transportation director. The good news is, I'm not rascally or any rad. So, good evening. Let me start by saying that it's been a pleasure working with the, with the informed and energetic infrastructure committee. I've enjoyed this and it's.
Great having people understand what's in the schools and, and walking around the schools with me. It's just fantastic. We've had a chance to look at and, look at and discuss most, if not all, the projects that I, that I'll present tonight. I'm going to start with transportation. So, thanks for the support we got this year. We were able to take advantage of a federal grant to purchase six buses at a 20% discount and purchase another mini bus through the state, state domain program. So, that was seven new, new buses for the, for the fleet. We also replaced one special services van and one plow truck. And all these new vehicles in the fleet has greatly affected our maintenance budget line as of this date. I am still well below 50% of my spending level for maintenance. So, it's been great. For this next year, I'm requesting two new buses through the state program and two vans, one replacement for a 13-year-old special services van with over 100,000 miles on it, and then a new van to accommodate the expanding load we have. All three of the existing vans are on the road constantly and last year I spent over $8,000 on contracted services for transport of special needs students. So, that's all I have for transportation and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions from the board? School Board Member Mostyn.
One thing I, I would like to bring up to the board as a whole and, and that does have a major impact on Mike and his job, and that is that within the last month, we've started working with the city council directly on the infrastructure plan for Saco and the Saco school system. This is something that some of us here have been calling for, for a while. And personally, I'm excited about that because this presents us with an opportunity, an opportunity, not another burden, an opportunity to be able to look at some of our major capital expenditures and make sure that we're wisely spending the money that the taxpayer gives to us. Furthermore, with the new school, there are many questions that need to be answered as a community. And through this joint, working together with the council, that's going to be possible. And without it, it was going to be very difficult. So, we'll be bringing reports to you, or at least Bethwell, as the chair of the infrastructure committee, and I hope I'm not stepping on her toes at this point. But we'll be bringing reports to you and also getting you involved as the school board in that discussion. That will be part of your agenda as far as the workshops are concerned. So, something that we've put on Mike's desk and that he's gladly picked up. And we're all really looking forward to the production and coming out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? School Board Member Leary.
Okay, Mike, I'm asking this for Art because he's not here. One of his things was on this plow truck. He was hoping we could work with the city, not have to buy a plow truck and have the city plow those areas. So, can you just, sorry, I had to ask. So, can you just tell us why that didn't happen? Like, the logistics of it?
workload that the city has for their plowing operations during snow thing, they just don't have time to get to the schools and stuff.
In the time of fashion.
Usually, a lot of times during these snowstorms, the schools might be not called or they might be called, but central office staff is working. So, a lot of times, by the time the city gets around to the schools, we're already, either staff's in or, or we're working and it's just, it's just too late to go ahead and, and call them. But, I mean, we do work together. Our, our plow truck has a radio in it and he has contact with all the, all the vehicles in the city. So, if, if additional help is needed, our, our plow truck driver can give some extra help to where we work together really well.
Okay. Good. Thank you. My second question regarding the buses, because I just, can you just tell us again what the overall plan is? I think, isn't there a plan to slowly start replacing the old buses and where are we at in that plan? And like, how many more buses are going to have to replace after these two? So, I'm just curious on that.
Yep. The ongoing program, I mean, right after the, the RSU, we planned on replacing two a year and then we'd catch up, you know, whenever we could. And that would pretty much, if we had two a year in 10 years, we'd replace 20 buses and then we'd, hopefully, we'd, we'd kind of catch up a little bit.
Yeah.
At least, at, at that rate, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be on top of everything, but at least we'd be replacing the buses at a good clip. This last year when we did six buses, it pretty much caught us right up to where we should be.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
So, now I think we're in, we're in a good spot now. I mean, I think we probably, I think five or six of our buses are probably could make the state list for a possible replacement. There's a lot of folks out there in, in the state that are a lot worse off than us. So, when we, when we request buses, you know, a lot of times we'll request two, we'll get one. So, then our decision is to, are we going to get two or are we just going to, you know, kind of, kind of stick with our one? But that's, we're, we're, we're in a good spot now and we're, we're going to keep, continue to, to request two buses and that'll, that'll keep us, keep us up where we should be.
So, this increase in the buses, does that include money from the state or is that?
That's actually a savings.
Okay.
So, that's part of the, the 137,500 that was reduced.
Okay.
So, so it's actually $25,000 less than what we originally budgeted for this year because when we refinanced those six buses, we saved over 20-something thousand dollars in interest. So, the plan, the way Mike's plan has been or what we kind of tried to mirror is that every year when we add two new buses, two old bus lease payments are dropping off. So, excuse me. The, the idea is to try to stay anywhere between 225 and 250,000 a year. Be consistent, have that as a replacement plan, not having large influxes. I know Art was really adamant about wanting to buy one outright because the following year, assuming we get approved for it by the state, the following year they give us the full amount of subsidy. Problem is, is sometimes you lose some of that subsidy within the calculations of whether or not the, the state does better than, than, you know, other surrounding districts. And so, you don't always get a one-for-one, but, so the goal essentially has been two a year, be consistent, and then as, as the lease drops off, new ones come on and you're not seeing a large influx.
Okay. Thank you.
On the, on the issue of buying our own snow removal and as opposed to working with the city, if, the only way that would work with the city is if we're currently, people are sitting around without things to do. Because if we're working in capacity now, there's no way that it could be done. The other thing is that we have responsibility as a school board to make sure that we are covered. It's essential. We can't, the city does a great job at, they're, they're not the same as us. We have, we're responsible for our constituents and I, I just think that's really important. I, I always look for ways to save money, but the only way you're going to save money, you could do this is, as I say, we're under utilizing facilities now. That's just, I don't think the case.
I guess just to clarify, the, the city is plowing our parking lots and, and they usually do a pretty good job of that and as soon as they're done, especially if school's called, I mean, if, if school's called, they'll go, you know, the parking lots will be probably not one of their first priorities. But if school's on, they get the parking lots before we start school. One of the things that we can take advantage of our truck is when, when there's an icy parking lot or if it ices up after it's, you know, after the, after the initial, the initial plowing, I can, I don't have any resource, I can't have any pull with the city to get their trucks or their sanders over in our parking lots very quickly if they're already busy someplace. So, we can call, you know, our own truck and the superintendent can say, Bill, get over here and, and throw some salt down on this thing and he's there in about two minutes. So, it's just, it's just very convenient for us to be able to take care of our own, own services.
Are there any other questions?
And again, thanks again for your support with the maintenance projects for this year. So far this year, we've been able to put a new roof on the Young School modular. We supported the expansion of pre-K. We plan on doing some, some roof work in the spring over at Burns and purchasing cafeteria tables in the spring at middle school. Sue and I are working together just planning how to figure out all these tables and we'll get rid of the ones that are kind of hard to open and close and hose and move into the ones that are operating. For this next year, I'm currently working with the city planning department administrators to add space at Young School and Fairfield School. Depending on the scope of the project, I'm, I'm not sure what, what that's going to end up, ending up like, but you know, we, I think we put probably 100,000 to 150,000 is what we're looking at for, for space needs. And I, you know, depending on the scope, I don't know what it's going to end up. I have an agreement now with Engineering Services. This year to develop a plan to improve the security and traffic flow at the entrance of Saco Middle School. Cause right now it's the only school when you have a school, you're not immediately in touch with some, some staff of the school. So, you're, the staff really doesn't have a, their sight to see who's coming in the school. If the door's opened, they come in and they just don't know, have any control over that. So, we'll, we'll look at that. And depending on the scope of that, it's probably, could be, you know, a $10,000 project just to move some furniture around, or it could be a $50,000 project to move some walls and stuff so that, we'll come up to the infrastructure, how we want to handle it at the time. We'll do some update and improve our heating plant controls. That's district-wide. We'll replace some outdated rooftop units at Saco Middle School. That's in the H-wing, the old computer, computer lab area. And then we'll replace some 20-year-old carpet now that we're eating in the classrooms. The carpets don't last as long as they used to and then now so, we just need to, that's a good reason to go ahead and replace the carpets. And that's pretty much what we got planned for maintenance. So, any questions, I'd be glad to help.
Are there any questions from the school board members? School Board Member Walters.
My question was just around an explanation on the DOE-approved classroom lease purchase.
Yeah, we still, we still, we're at Young School.
Yeah. So, those are both of our leased modulators. Yeah. And, and unfortunately, yeah, it says DOE. At one point it was approved, leased space that we needed. It's just an account, the, the account description should be, it's, yeah, it's just classroom lease space.
Any further questions?
I just, I wanted to point out one part of Mike's budget, he, he also, we booked the liability insurance for property. That's a significant difference this year, well, for next year as well as this year. We touched upon it a little bit. We have, we're going to have a $60,000 deficit for this year. Apparently, when we split from the, this, the RSU and became Saco Schools, when the, when we went on to the city's plan, well, combined plan with property insurance, the calculations that have been done on the distributions of whose expenses are what was, has been done wrong in the last five years in our favor. So, I, I guess, Glennis had approached me and, and sent me the backup that the, every year she keeps coming in as a deficit for her property liability insurance and she couldn't figure out why. And then when she went to see how the actual equations were done and breakout, we weren't being charged what we should have been being charged for our property. And the backup from Pacquinn and Carol, Josh, our representative, you know, agreed and, and sent the documentation as well. So, it's an increase for next year's budget, but that is our true cost. So, we've kind of got a little bit of savings the last couple of years. It was, it was, it was a big, big dollar amount, so I was surprised by the discrepancy.
Okay. Moving on to central office.
Okay. Promise I'll be quick. There's just a couple, I wanted to go over a couple of the departments that we don't actually really talk about very much. One of them is actually your guys' school board budget. I kind of feel like I create it for you, but we never really talk about it and I'm not sure how, your feelings around the school board budget. So, I figured we'd bring that up first. And what I have done for this fiscal year is really, the only number that really changes is, is the purchase professional services, which is legal in our audit. I have $65,000 in there this year, 15,000 is represented in the audit fees and 50,000 is for legal fees. I'm hoping that next year 50,000 is enough. We obviously know that this year is a little bit more than that. So, it's just something to think about if you, if you review. Historically, we've been around 35,000 to 45,000 between, you know, just general representation, mediation and other things. So, I do, I do feel as all that is a good mark, but I did want to bring that up and just address it with you that if you had any other concerns, you wanted to see anything change or different, please let me know and you guys will be discussing the budget soon enough. Second part we'll go over is the central office budget. What I have handed out to you is just kind of an overview of, of what central office means and what our business office is. When you hear central office, when people say central office, I think they, they think that there's like 20 people in the office. And there's, there is 20 people in the building, but they're all in different departments. So, truly, when you think central office is really only, I think if I'm asked correctly, seven of us. You've got superintendent. You've got. there is, 20 people in the building, but they're all in different departments. So truly, when you think central office is really only, I think if I'm asked correctly, seven of us. You get the superintendent, you get his right-hand woman, the admin assistant, we do have a front desk, jack-of-all-trades, we literally have her doing everything from school dude and billing, people renting our facilities, to helping with ADS requests for salary and benefits. She's, she's great as well. I have, sorry, of course, ADS just shut me out, there we go. I do have two others I directly supervise, as well as one that we work very close with, so we have a human resource manager, we have accounts payable specialist, and a payroll specialist. So, the four of us, and at least in the business office, we, we manage a $41 million budget, over 417 full-time employees, and 75 temporary employees, that your substitutes on a, you know, some weeks it's higher, and some weeks it's not, based on participation. That's a lot for four individuals. We, we always say there's some downtime at some point in, in the year, and for every, and I just don't remember where that time is, because it's been very busy the last several years. Specifically, our human resource would like to speak to that. We have, on average, 70 to 80 workplace injury reports, that she directly manages and maintains. She is the one person that does them all, and they keep her very busy with paperwork, and, and main school management, and the process that she needs to do in order to keep that straight for the employees. We also, this year, with the large increase of, well, in the increase in RADS, in the expansion of a special ed program, we had 88 new hires this year. That is a lot of people to meet one-on-one with and go over benefit packets. That, it's, it's a lot of her time, it, she does a great job with it, and, but again, it has been extremely busy year for her. She's also been organizing job fairs, trying to recruit more, because we always are still having needs. They've been going great, and even the leadership agreed today that, hey, let's do another one, because we get great candidates coming in for that. She's also the health and wellness ambassador for the district, as well as helps manage all the benefits, health, dental, life insurance, long-term disability, and our 403B contributions for the main vendors. So yeah, she's a busy woman as well. The next one I'm gonna talk about is the accounts payable. She is, she is the one that, if you ever need anything, historic-wise, she's seen it all, she's, she's done it all in the department as well. She processes over 5,000 invoices per year by herself, she codes and manages them all individually, she logs them, and she also does my accounts receivable for me, and well over 200 deposits a year. So she's a, she's a vital asset, as well as how the purchase order and requisitions process works, and she's a stickler on policy when it comes to reimbursements, ask anybody. But she's, she's great. Payroll, she's the youngest of the crew, she's been here almost two or three years. She processes 500 employee payroll checks, they're bi-weekly. And we manage several different systems, between our, our electric time sheets, which has its moments, which is great, and others that causes issues, as well as paper time sheets, and all of absentee reporting. So, you know, there's, how many people have been sick, well, every day of this week, she's gotta manually enter those into our system every week. Probably the most important piece is, is the, is her bi-weekly, monthly, quarterly reporting to the federal and state guidelines. That's our 941s, and that's our unemployment she has to file. That, that keeps her pretty busy, as well as our monthly main PERS. There's certain codes set up in our payroll that, based on what you're getting paid for, that's, it could be a different code for it. So if you're doing a stipend, she has to remember to put in a different code when she processes payroll. If she doesn't do that, when she's uploading the report on a monthly basis, it kicks it back. And so, it's, 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 it's a lot to remember, it's a lot to manage. But I, you know, I just wanna give a shout-out to my employees that I work with. They, they work really hard, they enjoy what they do, and this district runs smoothly because they take pride in what they do, and the accuracy. So, that's it for me. As far as budget's concerned, we have no RADS, and it's just salary and benefits. The only, I don't even think there's, no, nope, that's it.
Thank you.
And then Don can speak to his, obviously.
Superintendent, if I had to.
So, one of the things that people didn't realize, that Celeste, who's behind me, is doing the main care billing. I think that's important, that we took that in-house, and not giving it to, like, a mainstay billing, or a third-party who takes that money. So, we're doing it in-house. Celeste's doing an amazing job. We're still trying to cross-train other people in the, in there, just in case Celeste's out, or, or whatever, but I think that's an important aspect.
Thank you. I just had a question about the, I'm, I'm looking at page 1 of 3 under central office report, the administrative assistant salary.
I was just gonna touch upon that.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that's, and that right there is one reason why there's a discrepancy in that line. So, when we built this year's budget, we were anticipating a, that the main care billing was gonna be a full-time salary, we were gonna put all of Celeste's salary in special ed. It's become more of like a 20%, 25% of her job. So, when, so if you look at the, if you look to special ed budget, it's three, I believe it's three lines down, there'll be a savings in the secretarial spot on the special ed because of that factor. So we didn't actually reallocate all of her salary, and that's why there looks like a huge jump. So...
But there's a saving.
Yes, the save, the offset is the special ed side. So, again, when Don was speaking about all the hard work that she's, that Celeste's been doing with the main care billing, I wanted to touch, remind you that, that's, that's why there's a discrepancy there.
Thank you for, for explaining that. And the only other question I had was, the $15,000 increase under employee training and development. So it goes from, it looks like in the past previous three years, the most you've spent is 6,800, and now you're going from 5,500 to 20,500. So, just looking for that, you know, explanation.
Sure. And that's another number where the reduction of the 1.1 million, so actually, this year we built that, we, we remove, we moved money from tuition line that was being paid out of, like, three lines up, since Dr. Fassi's got his degree, we moved, shifted those funds to increase our PD line, but that was, we had to reduce it in order to make that 137,500 number.
Okay.
So it should have been, let me just verify the exact number. Well, you can come back, if you have any other questions, you can come back.
Yeah, so the, the other question I had was, I know some employers do it, where, during open enrollment, where you have a multiple session, where multiple employees come, and you, you do all your benefits at that time. You know, if we're having large hiring of employees, and benefits have to be done, why couldn't we do something like that to make sure, to put less stress on the employee who has to run around and, and gather all these, these benefits and so forth?
Yeah, and I'll go ahead.
We typically do that, like, over the summer, when we, when we do that, it comes in waves. So, Jen, I see her all the time, she'll take two or three ed techs, and go over the ed tech contract, because it's different than the teacher contract. Then she'll bring her teachers in, and go over that, you know, then there'll be teacher contract. Then if it's a bus employee, or, and, so it's really based on all the, the four different contracts that we have. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Even administrators, new administrators, we go down through their contract, and there're different things that they get.
Thank you. And, and just, overall, we talked about this, and, and touched upon it when you first presented the budget. This is pending, no changes to the already negotiated contracts, and pending negotiated contract, correct?
It's all in here.
It's all in here. Okay.
That we can kind of add that number, we can finish that, and we can go over to that.
Right, okay. School, any?
I just wanted to answer, I do have the information in front of me. Yes, it was reduced by $15,000. And because we shifted, for this fiscal year, we're supposed to shift those funds from tuition to here, and things like evaluation tool is what Dom has, has paid out of his, it's more of a district-wide cost, and didn't really have a place to, to put it. But that's a majority of what comes out of that, as well as video training for our legal fees, to make sure, like, sexual harassment and all those other items are. So it's kind of like a, a pot of money that pays for district-wide services, when it comes to professional development.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from school board member Leary?
Two questions. First, two questions. First one is on the business staff salaries.
Yes.
Is that part of the reduction from the city, and that's why it looks like it's 91,000?
Yeah, that was, that was reduced 72,500 to me.
Okay, so it's just gonna be a typical, and the other thing I just wanna say, is thank you very much for what you do also. I've seen tremendous growth, you have, make it so much easier for us to understand, and I just wanna say, good job, and thank you.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions from school board members? School Board Member Mazden.
I don't have a question. The item I'm gonna bring up isn't even on the agenda. However, we have only five members of the school board present. The way things are right now, that's gonna be the situation for three months. I would strongly suggest that the city council take another look at the issue of the decision they made about the replacement for Ward 1. This needs to be done now. We can't wait until July before you finally get a school board. At this point, you have two wards that are unrepresented, and will be that way. We have committees that will not have quorums. I'm pleading with you, let's get real. Don't tell me numbers that nobody knows. I've heard all kinds of things about the cost for it. Nobody has given me a number that's real. And furthermore, no taxation without representation, if you remember, is what caused the American Revolution. And nobody asked about the cost at that point. And the same thing here. We have to be more realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, moving on to adjourn, adjourn the workshop, is there a motion?
I move that we, I move that we adjourn the workshop session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hand vote, all in favor? Unanimous, we are adjourned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to go up there.
Go back to the desks.
I'm not sure I'm following, but don't we need to?
We're gonna go back to the desks, and then we're gonna move to bring in the regular board move.
We're moving around.
That's why I left that.
Was he trying to give him all?
That, that to me is awful.
Right there.
Besides, I need Art, so I don't have to work so damn much.
Okay, is there a motion to re-enter the regular school board meeting?
I move we re-enter regular school board meeting. A second.
Second. And a motion made by school board member Walters, second by school board member Shimon, to move, that we move re-enter the regular school board meeting. Yes. Roll call, vote, school board member Leary?
I did, yes.
Yes, school board member Walters?
Yes.
School board member Shimon? Yes. School board member Mazden?
Yes.
School board member Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0. We are re, we will be going downstairs. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
School board member Johnston?
I move we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of labor contract negotiations pursuant to 1 MRSA 40560 with no action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, school board member Leary?
Yes.
School board member Walters?
Yes.
School board member Shimon? Yes. School board member Mazden?
Yes.
And school board member Johnston. Motion passes 5-0. We will be meeting downstairs in the conference room for the discussion.
The ladies in the office had me convinced the last time I foot her, I just had to gallop.
The doctor.
The ladies in the office had me convinced the last time I foot her, I just had to gallop.
The doctor.
Welcome to the online.
Welcome to the online.
And a motion made by school board member Walters, second by school board member Shimon, to move, that we move re-enter the regular school board meeting.
Yes.
Roll call, vote, school board member Leary?
I did, yes.
Yes. School board member Walters?
Yes.
School board member Shimon?
Yes.
School board member Marsden? School board member Johnston? That motion passes 5-0. We are re, we will be going downstairs. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
School board member Johnston?
I move we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of labor contract negotiations pursuant to 1 MRSA 40560 with no action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, votes, school board member Leary?
Yes.
School board member Walters?
Yes.
School board member Shimon?
Yes.
School board member Marsden? And school board member Johnston? Motion passes 5-0.